Go, it's seven o'clock. I called the Board of Education Monday, August 9th, 21. Special Board of Education needs order. I need to be pledged.
The United States of America, in this republic, we will just say, one nation, under God, and in the ideal, if ever to be unjustified.
Crystal Beaver. Rebecca Shambles. Mark Holcomb. Cindy Holder. Deborah Hodd. Ben Scott. Gloria Thompson. Fleea Coran.
And with that, next up is public comments. Public input is fundamental to the operation of Madison District Public Schools. Our public has an opportunity to speak at every Board of Education meeting. A period of time known as public comment is set aside at each meeting to give parents and other citizens a chance to speak directly to the Board about school-related topics. Anyone who wishes to speak to the Board must fill out a request form and give it to the Board Secretary before the meeting begins. Comments are limited to three minutes. School employees will now use this forum to discuss job-related topics. The Board of Education accepts comments made during public comment from anyone who follows these guidelines. Public comment is one of the many information sources that the Board uses before making decisions in the best interest of the children who attend Madison District Schools. The Board also works with the district staff to address citizens' questions and concerns. And with that, before we start, I just want to remind everyone, there won't be any foul language. And we want everyone to be treated with respect, double respect, and no apologies. And with that, first up.
Linda Dempsey.
My name is Linda Dempsey, and I have a child in the district. I'm here today to say that I'm thoroughly disappointed with the forcing out of a man who was the enrichment coordinator and had varsity football coach recently, especially just days prior to the start of the season. I can't help but think that it was retaliation in response to the collective decision made by the Wolverines Board of Directors to secure an alternative field after being denied the use of a Madison field without reason by the superintendent. After the disappointing year of COVID, high school athletes were craving being on the field again amongst their brothers, amongst their family. Anyone who knows a thing or two about sports and especially football.
We can't hear you.
No, you're excited for the mic?
Yeah, we can hear you.
Hello? There you go.
Can you hear her now, though?
No.
Try it one more time.
Hello? My name is Linda Dempsey, and I have a child enrolled in this district. I'm here today to say that I'm thoroughly disappointed with the forcing out of a man who was the enrichment coordinator and had varsity football coach recently, especially just days prior to the start of the season. I can't help but think it was retaliation in response to the collective decision made by the Wolverines Board of Directors to secure an alternative field after being denied the use of Madison's field without reason by the superintendent. After the disappointing year of COVID, high school students were craving being on the field again amongst their brothers, amongst their family. Anyone who knows a thing or two about sports and especially football knows that the team is a family through and through. Many people remain lifelong friends from their time on the field, and some even come back to teach and work for the district to give back to their community as a result. For these young men to lose the lead member of their family and without prior notice or planning, it is extremely hurtful, cruel, and unprofessional. For some of these kids, it could be their last year playing football. Anyone that doesn't know the man I'm speaking about, he coached football for decades in this area and still does. He's a former graduate of Madison himself. He coached my adult brother who's 31 years old. I would say that being a coach is ingrained in his identity, and the district is lucky to have him. Anyone that knows him knows he's reliable, hardworking, and a known outside scout. I've served alongside him for the past six years as a one member of the youth football league in the city, and I've watched him transport kids who lack confidence and ability on the field. He coached my own children. He won awards when he won a wide day. And although I'm passionately debating with him at times, even though we butt heads frequently, I can stand up here and say that he would never turn his back on the kids. As the city league treasurer, I can say I personally witnessed him work hard to fundraise, even pay out his own pocket for children who could not afford what they need to participate. He is the type of person that this district desperately needs. I'm calling for the immediate reinstatement of this man tonight as the head varsity football coach and enrichment coordinator. He deserves that, and so does the kids. It is your chance to try and salvage the damage already done by this hasty decision. Just like in football, set your employees up for success by providing them with proper instruction and give them the opportunity to improve if necessary. If a training opportunity exists, then give feedback and set an action plan. And most importantly, be consistent in how you apply discipline. Because it is your credibility that is on the line when you treat certain people differently depending upon when or how it benefits you politically or personally. I can assure you that if he is not reinstated, I will not be keeping my honorable student in Madison District, and you'll be losing yet another great student and parent who contributes. Ron Scott, Crystal Beaver, and Linda Bazner are people who donate their time and money, who go beyond expectation in this district, and are the reason why I moved my son from that to Madison from our district. And I can assure you that I'm not feeling parents that feel this way. At this rate, several students will be leaving, and until these people are treated with the respect and dignity that they deserve. This Board has the power to rectify this situation, and I'm calling on you to do that tonight. And I would like to formally request by FOIA the dates that all football coach positions are posted annually on the district website for the past five years. I have the FOIA down here in town.
Ashlyn Borg.
When I tend to come up here to speak, I start to talk fast and make myself out of breath. When I started to think why this could be, I realized because I'm so nervous to come up and later get criticized for speaking what I am not used to. I even told him being disrespectful, and that the children mimic the parents, and that we should just overall stay quiet. For starters, the First Amendment gives me the right of freedom of speech. So just because you want me to stop does not mean I will. My voice matters, even if you believe it doesn't. Just because you get to argue every month and give your opinion doesn't mean I can't share my three minutes worth of comments during the meeting. I am almost 18. My mouth does not suddenly begin to work on my next word of it. I am raised to speak when others can't, and to stand my ground as long as I am respectful to my superiors and my elders. As my elders, I would hope y'all respond with the same respect since you represent my voice when I am not allowed to speak. Now, some of the comments that were made about me and my fellow students. When I speak up here, I am very respectful, along with many Madison District students. Sometimes, you may not see it that way, but frustration and despair show in many different ways. Disrespect isn't being told to me you don't like. Being disrespectful isn't telling you reasons our school is failing. Being disrespectful isn't a student coming up and telling you issues within our school. Just because you don't like it does not mean we are being disrespectful. So please do not criticize our character because you can't handle the truth. You also say children are mimicking their parents, but who tells those parents what's happening within the school? Who tells the parents what classrooms have mold and stains? Who tells the parents how the food is? The students. So don't say kids mimic their parents when the students are the ones telling the parents the issues to begin with. I have my own voice. I can come up here and tell you what I think and tell you how I feel. And you know what? The only thing I mimic for my parents is the strength to share my opinion no matter who tries to knock me down and quiet me. Because no matter how much you try, I will never stop fighting for what's right. So on that, you would be right. I did mimic my parents with strength and courage and with an unwavering spirit that even a board member cannot stuff out. As a board member, you should be happy what students are telling you. You should, we could just all transfer and never tell you what's wrong. Then what are you gonna do? You don't need a board when the school has no students. You don't need a board when there's no school at all. You need to stop trying to do the opposite of what some trustees want just because you would rather argue and go against them. You need to be focusing on the things that matter. Start focusing on the students and teachers. Stop pretending arguing because you can't, because you can't listen to other people's opinions. Stop pretending that you care for the school's well-being if you don't. And stop mentioning the old board or blaming others, because look where that got us. They might be the reasons, the ones responsible for why we're in the mess now, but you ran to be the ones who fixed it and ran for specific positions. Now it's time to actually do them. Get your acts together before you cause more damage. Start to be in the change you want to see.
Heather Mosey.
My name is Heather Mosey, and I have a student athlete at Madison High School. Up until the last board meeting, my husband and I have been chosen to remain in silence as we watched the rampant denial of Madison District Public Schools. I watched community members give their opinions on how great things are and how it's not that bad. I watched the previous board president publicly humiliate students, staff, and parents when speaking up about the condition of the local school. I've also witnessed the current president publicly chastise students who speak up for themselves. That's adults and parents. Aren't we supposed to teach our kids to speak up for themselves? Isn't that their given human right? Let's face it, we all know the condition of the high schools in this area. But what are you going to do about it? Meeting after meeting, comment after comment, and nothing ever happens. Where are you going? No answers to questions, no actions for unsolved issues. And to top it all off, the varsity football team has lost their mentors and the entire coaching staff. Not only the athletic kids were called to a 9:00 AM practice with a fall three test that everyone's given a coach. And they were allowed to practice without proper documentation. Had anyone checked if Coach Ron, they would have known. Thank you to Coach Darbo for stepping up. Your efforts are appreciated. Also, since when is it a crime for a coach to give support to his or his team? Why wouldn't a coach want to help his players get to a front practice safely? Is this what we're aiming for? Are you working hard to get rid of the students, staff, and athletics, and all angles with it? I'm sure I'll never know. As an eye district parent with a senior, our options are zero as far as participation in football. If there is no team at Madison, he has nowhere to go. He looks up to Ron, trusts him, and counted on him. If it wasn't for Ron, Evan would have never passed the law of grave student personal issues. And now you have snatched his mentor from him. You are, you and the superintendent have committed terrible service to the district and the community by letting all these amazing people walk away. This is an embarrassment and a total distraction to the kids. Here, roughly two weeks, they're meant to return to school. Will there be anyone left? And I just want to remind everyone that these kids are watching you, and they see you, and they see how you treat parents and dismiss them. They know who's here for them, and they don't deserve to have anyone taken away from them. Thank you.
Steve Bassler.
Steve Bassler, 26377, present. Good evening, Board. I'd like to start off by asking a question of the entire Board. Will someone sitting on this board make a motion to amend an agenda and a motion to suspend a superintendent until the county number blessed with trial? For all the numbers have declined each year under his leadership, and I don't believe test scores have ever been posted. He has brought up into the table, with his latest stunt, he pulled by forcing the enrichment coordinator, expect the Roman numbers to drop even further. There are numerous positions that the high school not filled with starting schools just a few short weeks away. That tells me we have a reactive leader, not a proactive leader. Let's not confuse effort with results. Our former board president made a terrible mistake by not posting the superintendent position and not interviewing, but instead placing an interim tag on the current superintendent without any experience. These practices have proven to be costly to our driving, our once thriving district. Another community member praises the superintendent for being physically responsible. By how many losses in legal counsel fees does the district have to pay? Doesn't seem physically responsible to me. Also, in the last meeting, I heard the super speak about background checks, and I would hope the HR department would handle this and not disclose to the super since she's responsible for leaking my background to the former board president. The way the superintendent speaks to parents and students is repulsive. When the leader of the district tells the parents, "I'm gonna tell you one time, one time only," where's the level of professionalism? Just at the last board training meeting, the super stated that parents are lying and everyone's being attacked, even the air community. I'm sorry, I didn't realize one person was the air community. This guy obitually lies to not only the public, but the Board of Education as well. Let me remind you, members of the Board, he's your one and only employee, and he acts like he can do whatever he wants. It's past time that it's time to put a stop to it. Who's the boss? You guys are it. I'll never come after anyone who said on the Board of Education until they open their mouth with an opinion of me or try to attack my family. So don't be the person conditioned out and who can't take it. In closing, I'm gonna use one of the superintendent's quotes of the former school board president and his followers, in attendance or not, I'm gonna tell you one time, one time only. If you want to continue to attack my family for exposing truths, I'm not hard to find. Come knock on my door with the same confidence you have on social media and the comfort of your home. I promise you're gonna leave home.
Austin Brown.
Okay, AP. In 2019, after playing in the state championship game in football, winning the district finals in one of the most memorable games I've ever played in for basketball, winning the league in baseball, setting more than 10 kids in college on an athletics scholarship. This is a direct quote from the Madison superintendent. I am sick and tired of hearing about athletics. Perfect. So let's make this not about athletics for a second. Other than athletics, what else does Madison have all? There's no active school programs or activities other than sports, and that has came to a halt this week. No more robotics, culinary arts, art clubs, as well as no more mams. Matter of fact, they're not even offering. This will be cool that everyone loved this clothes, and I could go on forever to about the clubs that were up and flourishing three years ago. Currently, there's around 30 or so positions within the district, including those positions within the specialized classroom, where these students have built comfortable relationships with these teachers and unfortunately will not go in there without a clue who their new teachers are. This is due to teachers leaving to get out of such a bad situation because morale has been eliminated by leadership. Three years ago, Madison was a place of opportunity, and everyone thought they hit the lottery to either work or go to school at Madison or within the district. This used to be a school built on loyalty and family. Key word used to be. Now back to the sports side of things. Sports can teach things that regular school activities don't. Teach you one thing in particular in this leadership. Nothing flourishes without proper leadership, and it's very obvious in what has been going on with the district for the past few years. I mean, our superintendent was interviewing for a centerline superintendent job in front of their Board of Education six months into his appointment, into his appointment here at Madison. This was a lateral move, and he wasn't even selected for a second interview. And our Board, the size one trustee, decides to thank him by paying him higher than 9% of superintendents in our county, which is one of the richest ones in Michigan. And by the way, we are the smallest. Make that make sense. Used to look up to the superintendent as he once was my teacher, and even went to a championship game at Ford Field in the eighth grade. Now look regret. Last thing, without proper, alright. Last thing, practice started today in the high school for football, when we had six players there as well as five without proper physicals. This is an MHSAA violation and will not cover catastrophic insurance for any player without a physical. Also, these coaches that were there did not get proper certifications and training to be a varsity coach. Furthermore, a potential Title IX lawsuit could be certifiable. Sorry. A potential Title IX lawsuit could be filed because girls volleyball wasn't able to certify, but football was. It's hard to believe we were at the state championship stage only three years ago. I think you all see that there really is a lot that goes into running athletics. It's too bad, you know, so. Closing, Paco Polk, Deputy Peyton, he said, "A legacy is only worthwhile when there's future to it." Therefore, I ask all you, what is your legacy? What is Madison's future? Thank you.
Jessica Sanford.
Hello, speaking here. Everybody?
Yep.
Probably have to break anything down. I just came to her for the football team, being an incredible man, sport junk. I think letting him go was the biggest mistake. I think you guys will need to reconsider that. For one, 70% of the team is seniors on the football team. I mean, playgrounds like that do.
Nanette Bassler.
I have so many things to say to this Board of Education with so little time. But obviously, tonight the focus is athletics. Jimmy Brown, Greg Raspberry, The Basslers, James Rogers, Eric Eplin, Buddy Marr, Christian Morales, Jerry Beasley, Liz Kramer, Alicia Robinett, Nick Wallace, Chuck Franklin, Bill Pittman, Jay Scott, Marvin Alcatip, The La Forge Brothers, Paul Kegavine, Stephanie Current, Scotty LaBrash, The Bernardis, and last, but certainly not least, Ron Scott. What do these names have in common? They are influential adults and role models in Madison Children's Lions that coached Madison students. When the athletes refer to their Madison family, they are their Madison family. This is their Madison family. These students look up to all of these adults, whether you like it or not. These adults brought students to Madison. Madison students love these people because they dedicate their hearts and souls teaching them sports they love. How to be a teammate, push them to improve their grades and behave in the classroom, bring them snacks and meals, drive them to games, pick them up for school, drive them to visit universities, push for recruiters to come to games, and fill them with the love for the game, win or lose. These people at one time bled, not bleed, purple and gold, and taught the kids to be proud of where they came from. Even if you don't have the best facilities or have enough money to purchase the necessary equipment. Since the appointment of the current superintendent, the children have been stripped of the people they love, the people they call family. Most recently, they were stripped of Liz Kramer, myself, my husband, Ron Scott, and his staff, and I'm sure Alicia Robinett isn't far behind. I think you all owe these kids an explanation. I can give it to them because I'm sure you won't. Grown adults with personal vendettas and not putting the students in the district first. In the past two weeks, the superintendent has violated Title IX twice that I'm aware of prioritizing boys' courts over girls' courts. He also supervised football practice today without physicals that are required by the MHSAA. I have contacted the Board and filed a formal complaint against the superintendent for discrimination with no response from this board. This Board of Superintendent can blame Facebook all day long for your own failures, but the fact is, the superintendent was a well-trained puppet under the Kimball Board, and he has just finished his job. It is a matter of time before Madison's doors close, and that will be your legacy. Some of you, some of you may be proud. I know at least a few of you are disgusted, but you all sit on this board and hold the power to remove the cancer from this district. Fire the superintendent. If you don't, I'm sure within the next year, the state will step in because enrollment will be so low that you won't be able to keep it like that.
Dear Board. Dear Board, stop accusing people of lying just because you don't want the truth out. Dear Miss President, you say that you want, you say that you want the best for us kids, then you tell us to stop mocking our parents. Dear Board, you're one of the reasons I cry every single day. Dear Board, how long will it take you to wake up? Dear Board, stop flattering people when you need the help. Dear Board, I know you're just gonna push this aside as soon as I'm done talking. Dear Board, listen to us. Dear Miss President, you can't shut me up in my own school. Dear Board, please get yourself together.
Thanks, wait. We're not swearing, like I said. We are not swearing.
These are my kids. You see them? Those are my kids. I don't have one, I don't have two, I have 55.
That man who lied to my son's face three times today in five minutes' time is wrong. He lied to him and said he has a coach, he did not. He lied to him and said everything would be okay, it's not. He lied to him and said he'll have his AP class, but he don't even have a teacher in the building. Quit lying to my kids. Fix it. This is not okay. My kid looked up to you. These kids looked up to you when you were the principal of this building. And now what? They cry. My kid cried for three days when you took Ron Scott away from the net to the mentor. And today, you lied to his face and told him it was gonna be okay. It's not okay. It's time for you to bring him back, because without him here, all those kids are not gonna be sitting there. I leave, they leave. I promise you. I'm not, I'm telling you facts. And let me tell you, if that man threatens me ever again, you all are gonna have a lawsuit on your hands. His five forcey plan was violated. So you'll hear from my attorney about that. You know about lawsuits, Ms. Holder, but he's bringing them to you all day long. It's time to let him go. Bring Ron Scott back so these boys stay, and you have a district to open, because by tomorrow, it won't be. You think this field, hell, on the field today, they're not gonna be there tomorrow unless Ron Scott's there, because those boys love him. And you took away the last thing they loved. Shame on you. Shame on all of you for allowing that man to make these doors close, because that's exactly what's happened, whether you want to believe it or not. The five forcey plans, that needs to be fixed. My son will fail to class for that. That man knew about it for seven months, it's still not fixed. That's legal. You'll hear from my attorney about it. Last thing I'm gonna say is, lie to me again, who threatened me again, and you will see my face in a courtroom. Don't ever do that again. Don't you ever lie to my kids facing him.
Rachel, sorry, Rachel Easterling.
The cognitive approach has become much more widespread in recent decades, not 65, 2020, mainly because it accounts for how things such as memories, beliefs, and emotions, motivation, motivates, contributes to the learning process. Please educate yourself on what's happening in your schools before you try and take my daughter's pride away. Thank you.
Anna Lee Basler.
Hi, everyone. I have a few concerns and questions that may never be answered.
Get closer, Anna.
Hi, everyone. I have a few questions and concerns that may never be answered. When did it become appropriate for adults to attack students? Seems to be all this board does, attack their students by stripping them of sports or resources. Everyone is leaving the district. People can believe what they want, but everyone who left left into a tax grant supporting their grades, the decision in which board or the superintendent made. Since when was it disrespectful for students that come to the board and help? Apparently, student opinions are such a bad thing. Apparently, since I'm 16, I came here to begin and want better from my peers at the time myself. If you wanna talk about being disrespectful, what's disrespectful is to discriminate against your age. The things said about my family, five board members and ex-members, what's disrespectful? When my sister, mother, and I were all spoken about, spoken to by the student team, then last call was disrespectful. How would you feel if I said majority of this board is way too old to have an opinion on students and what they should and should not have to say about the district, positive or negative? Wait, would that be disrespectful? Respect is earned, not given. This board has not earned any ounce of respect they demand, that they demand they have. Everyone's entitled to their own opinion, that's how I grow up, and to stand what you believe in. I believe this district is failing with students. How would you feel if finally it had led to your students with absolutely nothing? What about a new athletic director, or a varsity football coach? What about a volleyball coach? Clearly, he wears it too much to handle. What about your students' mental health and health overall? Oh, yes, that seems to be a joke too, right? Seems like I just had deja vu. Feel better for your students to not just to school's pocket, which seem to be all of this superintendent's flaws, which seem to make far too much spread than absolutely enough of a student. It's crazy to believe that people support majority of this board and superintendent that is failing with this district. When school president lies, people have gone, if brainwaves are special and these children need to sit down and shut up, I reserve the right to disrespect her, lead by example.
Ivana Sayajan.
I'm Ivana Sayajan, a teacher at Madison High School. Speaking only for myself and anyone else with similar questions. I know that you are trying to do what's right for our students and staff, and I know that you are open to changing our COVID protocols based on the low community transmission and high vaccination rates in Oakland County. However, the new guidance coming from the Michigan Department of Health, the US Department of Education, the CDC, and the American Academy of Pediatrics, some of us are left wondering what information was used to make all protocols we had last year optional. Are you aware of any guidance from the Oakland County Health Division that goes against what these organizations have told us? Are you consulting with infectious disease experts somewhere else? Maybe you ask a pediatrician you trust? Do we even have a nurse anymore? All of the teens and adults in our district got to make a choice on getting immunity through vaccinations, but our middle school and elementary students do not have that choice yet. We're welcoming them back into our classrooms with no hybrid learning out loud, so it's up to us to protect them indoors. We've been successfully using distancing, ventilation, disinfecting, contact tracing, quarantining, testing, and masking all last year. Which of these mitigations protocols are we still able to do during this school year? Universal masking is seriously the easiest, cheapest thing we could maintain indoors. It's just a piece of cloth that traps and slows down most droplets from everyone's breath so that fewer aerosolized variants end up inhaling by everyone in the room. Children are at low risk, but they are not without risk of getting very sick. And those who have pre-existing conditions or have immunocompromised family at home should be protected when the community transmission gets high. Are we able to grant them this one guarantee or at least provide filtering, shallow-sized KN95 masks or something? Thank you.
Aidan Robinett. I used to protect the superintendent at one point. He was an actually good person. But times have really changed. I'm not the one to talk and get all this drama BS. But, but once you take something from me and a lot of people behind me that we care about, you're asking for it. I also wanna throw in, I don't recommend threatening my mother ever again. But that football team behind me, that's my second family, those are my brothers. And sadly that, you took one of our family members away from us. And I know him well enough to know that he wouldn't just up and leave on us, that he wouldn't just abandon us. Man, we were looking like a championship team till that man burnt it to the ground, smiled, and went out like it was nothing. Then he must have lied on my face saying, "Oh, it's gonna be okay. Oh, but we'll have a season. Give it a chance. Get outta here with that to disgrace." Just like you are to this district. You took one of the best people in this city away from us. I respect that man more than anyone I know. Man, I wouldn't even be where I'm at today if it wasn't for him. He's had my back since the day I met him, so I'm gonna have his the whole way. He wrote for the entire Madison football family, so don't ever claim yourself apart from him. So I'm gonna write for him all the way like he did for us. Mr. Superintendent, sitting back watching you burn this district to the ground and not knowing if I can stay here for a long, because you wanna make everything about yourself. Does that seem right to any of you? I don't think so. Well, here's your chance to fix things that are wrong. You wanna do what's right for the kids and the parents, start now. Start by giving us back what we want, start by giving us back our family member. I'd appreciate it. I hope you all have a good night besides you, Mr. Superintendent, because I don't like you. Jason Hadgson, Hadgson, I'm sorry.
I come here tonight for two reasons. One, I am the board president of Madison High School. Two, I'm a great contributor, I'm a former high school football player. As regards to the whole organization, we have never been denied use of the field. We hope to carry out the tradition of over 50 years of our kids playing in Madison. Let me be clear, we still to this day do not know why we were denied. Furthermore, if we had not been reached out to the school board to demand why we were denied use of the field, our application would still be denied to this day. The superintendent made no effort to contact us. If this was just a simple procedure of error, my phone number was on the application, he had and could reach out at any time. The way our situation was handled was poor at best and disrespectful to our longstanding relationship with the district as well as the kids of our organization. We attempted to make work with the superintendent, attempted to set up a face-to-face meeting. We agreed to meet pending a time and date. After four days appearing nothing, we had to move forward with creating another occasion. So we need to make sure the kids of Madison fight for the experience that they deserve. Our distrust and lack of transparency from what we could and could not expect from the district is why we are no longer in Madison. We hope that our organization would stay clear and clear of the problems in Madison District and it pains us that of almost 60-year tradition has fallen this way. If you feel you have any questions you need or any of our board members, you can email me at the MadisonHighSchool organized gmail dot com or come to our board meeting after the first Tuesdays every month. Now, as a parent, seeing your district as the family that we have seen, the underlying devotion by the volunteers and parents of your district. Since we have been here, there's been one disappointing experience after another. The final straw for us was considered to remove Ron Scott from the football coaches. After a horrible COVID year, the kids worked hard to be ready for the 2021 season. To make this decision a week before the season is unconscionable. That was a decision that was not thought out, which seems to be a common theme with the superintendent. As a parent, when is enough enough when there's nothing left? If anyone in this room believes that Ron Scott voluntarily walked away from the kids in the coaching since they were eight, you don't know Ron Scott. I demand that the school board reinstate Mr. Scott as the head football coach as well as suspend the superintendent until a replacement can be found. If you choose to do nothing, you are just responsible for the damages that he caused.
Cameron Corso.
Tell him.
Good evening. Good evening, my name is Cameron Corso. Some of you's parents know me, some of you might know, but I went here for high school. When I went here, we was all a family. Mr. Dula-Ha was the principal, Jim Brown was the athletic director, and it was all my family, happy and cool. But for you to take this man out of the organization from the kids, that's wrong. That's wrong. But he took us. He took us as his own, he took all of us in his family. Everybody that's sitting here today wants him here for a reason because we all love him, like he wanted my own. And all I wanna say, thanks for managing me and your family, thanks for everybody coming out, but these kids need Ron Scott.
Devon Benoy.
I have a question. I have a question. Can you hear me now? Okay, so I have a question. I support the football team and everything that we stand for. My son is on the team as well. He's been in this district since elementary school. But my question tonight is about the teachers. How are our students going to learn if there are no teachers to teach them when school starts? If their plan has to be devolved to the parents. I just learned of this like yesterday, and I'm kind of upset because again, being a junior, it's two years left, the sports, you know, if the sports are not happening and there's no teachers, it's not going to be yes. So I need to understand what is the agenda of the board and how are you gonna be a teacher to be in the classroom to teach my child and everybody else's children this year? Thank you.
Jonathan Beaver.
First of all, I wanna say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I got your legs and picked my kids up from practice. My first thought after this morning's debacle with football, I wanted to just do a hip jerk reaction and I had a long speech written out. I scrapped that because I wanna speak from my heart for a little bit. If you are a student, former or current student of Madison at any level, please stand up. If you are a staff member, former or current, please stand up. If you are a concerned community member, please stand up. That should just about cover everybody. Sorry, I won't keep you standing for long. Everybody can sit back now. Each one of you were elected to do what's best for those students, for staff, and this community. Now, I've heard people get up here and talk about the state championship run, and it was awesome, just sitting in Ford Field in that atmosphere when the entire city, north, south, and east, in the last, at the backs of everyone on that field, everyone in the stands with them. Over the last few years, I feel like that's been cut little by little, was taken little pieces here, little pieces there. Mrs. Basler brought up all the names of people that have left the district. $43,500, that's the amount of money that my families worked in the district. I know that this is a business first and foremost for the numbers. And I wanna know how many $43,000 families are gonna have to walk out the door for something to be done here.
Thank you. Ever. One, two, um, people of the resolution calling for the bond election. Chair. Yes, trustee. Chalmers.
I would like to make a motion to a Matthew Ajenda.
For what reason?
It can happen after Ron Scott, that's fine, but it's in regards to current events, performance, and superintendent goal revision and failure to, possible failure to meet those standards.
And is there support?
Madam President, this is Bep Scott. I'll support.
With that, we need you to have a vote. Anybody else have anything to say about Amani Niaganda? Amani Niaganda, oh. There is nothing. Roll call vote, please, Mrs. Kennedy. Mark Holcomb. Deborah Hahn.
Yes.
Can I talk to each other?
Gloria Thompson.
No.
Cindy Holder.
No.
Beth Scott.
Yes.
Crystal Beaver.
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles.
Yes.
As a parent, when is enough enough when there's nothing left? If anyone in this room believes that Ron Scott voluntarily walked away from the kids from the coaches since they were eight, you don't know Ron Scott. I demand that the school board reinstate Mr. Scott as the head football coach, as well suspend the superintendent until his replacement can be found. If you choose to do nothing, you are just responsible for the damages that he caused.
Cameron Corso?
Tell them! Good evening, my name is Cameron Corso. Some of you's parents know me, some of you might know, but I went here for high school. When I went here, we was all a family. Mr. Dula-Haw was the principal, Jim Brown was the athletic director, and it was all my family, happy and cool. But for you to take this man out of the organization from the kids, that's wrong. That's wrong. But he took us. He took us as his own, he took all of us in his family. Everybody that's sitting here today wants him here for a reason, because we all love him, like he wanted my own. And all I want to say is, thanks for managing to be a family, thanks for everybody coming out, for these kids, for Ron Scott.
Devan Benoy?
Okay, so I have a question. I support the football team, and everything that we stand for. My son is on the team as well, he's been in this district since elementary school. But my question tonight is about the teachers. How are our students going to learn if there are no teachers to teach them when school starts? If their plan has to be devolved to the parents? I just learned of this like yesterday, and I'm kind of upset because again, being a junior, it's two years left, and the sports, you know, if the sports are not happening, and there's no teachers, then these aren't going to be yes. So I need to understand what is the agenda of the board, and how are you going to be a teacher to be in the classroom and teach my child and everybody else's children this year? Thank you.
Jonathan Beaver?
First of all, I want to say thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I got your leg as I picked my kids up from practice. My first thought after this morning's debacle with football, I wanted to just do a hip-jerk reaction, and I had a long speech written out. I scrapped that because I want to speak from my heart for a little bit. If you are a student, former or current student of Madison, at any level, please stand up. If you are a staff member, former or current, please stand up. If you are a concerned community member, please stand up. That should just about cover everybody. Sorry, I won't keep you standing for long. Everybody can sit back now. Each one of you were elected to do what's best for those students, for the staff, and this community. Now, I've heard people get up here and talk about the state championship run, and it was awesome, just sitting in Ford Field, in that atmosphere, when the entire city north, south, and east in the west, at the backs of everyone on that field, and everyone in the stands with them. Over the last few years, I feel like that's been cut little by little, was taking little pieces here, little pieces there. Mrs. Bazner brought up all the names of people that have left the district. Forty-three thousand five hundred. That's the amount of money that my families worked in the district. I know that this is a business, first and foremost, for the dot, for the numbers. And I want to know how many forty-three thousand dollar families are going to have to walk out the door for something to be done here?
Thank you, everyone. One, two, um, people of the resolution calling for the bond election. Yes, trustee Chandler.
I would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
For what reason?
Um, it can happen after Ron Scott, that's fine, but it's in regards to current events, performance, and superintendent goal revision, and failure to, possible failure to meet those standards.
And, is there support?
Madam President, this is Beth Scott, I'll support.
With that, we need you to have a vote. Anybody else have anything to say about amendment agenda? Amendment agenda over. Hearing none, roll call vote, please, Mrs. Kennedy.
Mark Holcomb? Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Gloria Thompson?
No.
Cindy Holder?
No.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Motion passes to amend agenda.
And where are we going to put this?
Either it was suggested after the HR report, or do you want to report, um, before that?
All right, get back to, um, um, resolution. Here we go. Sorry, I apologize. Whereas, in the opinion of this board, it is necessary and expedient to ask voters whether to approve a bond project consisting of replacing roads at the high school, the middle school, and the early childhood center, and remodeling and re-equipping the high school's imparts for classroom, security, mechanical, electrical, and other infrastructure improvements. On this board, it estimates the necessary cost of the project to be eleven million four hundred, one thousand, sorry, eleven million four hundred, one thousand four hundred, five dollars. It will be necessary for the district to borrow the sum of...
Somebody's talking better than one.
Thank you. Sorry about that. I'm trying to project, I apologize. It will be necessary for the district to borrow the sum of eleven million four hundred thousand dollars and issue the bonds of the district. Therefore, the remaining funds to be derived from the investment of the bond proceeds. This bond intends to submit a proposition and a special election to be held on Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. On a before four PM on Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one, the board shall certify any valid proposition to be submitted to the voters at such election to the election coordinator or coordinators designated to conduct elections within the district, i.e. the election coordinator. Now, therefore, it is resolved that a special election of the school electors of the district be called and held on Tuesday, November second, twenty twenty-one. The proposal to be voted on at the special election shall be stated on the ballot in substantially the form SF four in exhibit A. The election coordinator is requested to, A, utilize his, uh, this is blank. Synergy? CNG, thank you. A newspaper published or of general circulation within the district for publication of notices in accordance with the election law requirement. Utilize ballot proposition summary information as prepared by legal counsel in the forms of the notice of the last day of registration and election in substantially the form SF four in exhibit B attached hereto. Provide approved copy of the ballot to the district and its legal counsel in sufficient time to allow the ballot to be proofread prior to printing. This board estimates the period of usefulness of investment for which bonds of the district in the amount of eleven million four hundred thousand dollars are to be issued to be not less than twenty-five years. The secretary of this board is hereby authorized and directed to file a copy of this resolution with the election coordinator and with any election clerk, at clerks designated to conduct elections within the district by four PM on Tuesday, August tenth, twenty twenty-one. All resolutions and parts of resolutions, insofar as they conflict with provisions of this resolution, be in the same are hereby rescinded. Attached for the Board of Education reviewing approval is the resolution calling for the bond election November second, twenty twenty-one, which must be adopted by the Board of Education at its special meeting scheduled for Monday, August ninth, twenty twenty-one. Also included is, is a calendar of tasks the district would complete to ensure a successful bond election, the sum of not to exceed eleven million four hundred thousand, for the purpose of replacing roads at the high school, the middle school, and early childhood centers, the remodeling and re-equipping of the high school, imparts for classroom, security, mechanical, electrical, and other infrastructure improvement. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve the resolution calling for the bond election on November second, twenty twenty-one. I need a maker in support, please.
I'll make the motion that we approve the resolution calling for the bond election on November second, two thousand twenty-one.
Trustee Beaver, and do we have support? Trustee Holcomb? Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Beth Scott?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
Yes.
Crystal Beaver?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next up is Mr. Fields with the personnel report.
There are two new wires, Demarre McDonaldson, PE health teacher at Madison High School, and Roger Pitts, math teacher at Madison High School. One resignation, Ronald Scott, enrichment coordinator at Madison High School. And that's all there is to report this time.
Yeah, we have to follow this. It is recommended that the Board of Education accept the personnel report from Madison District Public Schools as president. You need a maker in support, please. Trustee Thompson? Trustee Odd? Any discussion?
Here. Who is it? Ms. Beaver?
Trustee Beaver, go ahead.
Can we vote on the separately?
Motion was made to do them both, so it will be up to the maker.
And a president?
Yes, Mr. Scott.
Can we, can we, um, ask the maker to rescind that?
We can ask if she wants to change it.
Ms. Thompson? Beth Scott? Are you going to rescind that to make these votes individually?
I don't think there's a need for that. They've got this with wires and a resignation for...
That's right.
So, here now, there's no other discussion? We're voting on the recommendation to accept the personnel report, yes. We have a voting vote, please.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Beth Scott? Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Mark Holcomb?
Sure.
Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
No.
Crystal Beaver?
No.
Motion passes four three.
That's ridiculous! Nice job! Let's go, because it's... Let's go! Way to go! You had a chance to fix this!
Let's go, Kay!
Nice job! Yeah, all that talk about the kids! They're all leaving now! You could have done this right!
How can you literally tear apart this entire district and you still have a voting vote? I don't give a shit about your devil! You literally just ripped this whole fucking district apart!
We're turning for five minutes! Nobody! You guys stand behind that? What kind of people are you? Do not trust my kids!
You guys thwarted me out! You lost my work, tired of my new verdict! You guys thwarted me out!
Fuck that, you tell them to get him back!
All that work!
You guys are absolutely ridiculous sitting up there! You guys aren't going to have football team! Your football team is going to stop right now! If we can't get control of this meeting, I will let it right now!
Let him finish it, Tabby! Hey, let him finish! Let him finish! Let him go through!
Let him go to the end!
Let him finish! Let him finish! Hey, this is, man, he's a prick too. And he supports it because it's just a meaningless job, and he doesn't support that. So get away from him. He's a lamefoot guy. He has nothing to do with this, but he hits her. So get away from him, please. He thinks this is funny. He thinks this is funny because the district's probably, he thinks it's funny, that's why he's here. Why else would anybody here? He's the one on Facebook always talking on his mouth about how silly everybody is here, but he's got all the issues. And he's not even from this district. Running this mouth about everyone's... This is people's income, and he's got the nose nerve to rub his mouth? So don't sit by that, please. People lost their jobs and their family's income, and he thinks it's funny, and he supports that. That's funny.
If we lose control of the meeting, no. Just watch their officers. If we lose control of the meeting, then shut it down, right now. Okay, leave that, go close the meeting.
He's the only reason all the workers are here, y'all losing all your students to see please.
Right, you have to vote on that.
You do have to vote on it!
Hey, your lawyers are in the nation, no you shouldn't be talking to each other! That means the body don't go through it! The body don't go through it, you got that!
Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Who was support? Thank you. Mark Holcomb?
Yes.
Rebecca Shambles?
No.
Crystal Beaver? Cindy Holder?
Yes.
Deborah Odd?
Yes.
Beth Scott? Gloria Thompson?
Yes.
Motion passes four three. Meeting is adjourned. Eight oh six, thank you.